Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Talks meeting. Today is Monday, July, it's not Monday, Tuesday, July 18, 2023, the time is about 6:00 P.M. The regular reading of the City Council, the City of Trinidad will now come to order. Would you please rise for the ladies of the Senate?
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, please.
DeBono.
Here.
Criego.
Here.
Ovaltree.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson. Rico.
Here. I am two approval of the agenda. Does Council have any changes that they would like to make? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ovaltree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy of administration staff reports. Item eight, county request for an EIAF funding. Mr. Rutter, what do you have?
Mr. Mayor, this is the Council. We have received a request from the county to assist with half of the, I believe it would be half of a match for an EIAF grant to repave Arizona from the edge of the city to the landfill. And the county is saying that since it's our landfill and trucks use that road to access it, they would like us to fund that match. So it would be around $150,000, I believe, for our half of the match, up to $300,000, depending on if we wanted to do this. Certainly, that's something the Council would have to appropriate. So we wanted to bring this to you all to have that discussion tonight. I guess the way, our recommendation would be, probably not, but we're definitely open to your feedback. And if that's something we wanted to pursue, we definitely could look into that.
Questions from Council?
So that's outside the city limits?
It is outside the city limits. It's entirely in the county. And the grant application is to rehabilitate Arizona. And I think most of you have probably been up there recently. It is in bad shape, needs to be repaved. What I would say is for heavy equipment, there's wear and tear on our streets as well because of the trash trucks. And it's not just residential and commercial trash hauling in the city that's accessing our landfill, it's countywide. So there are other players involved in that as well. But ultimately, it's a decision for the Council. And if you'd like us to move forward, we're happy to pursue this, but just wanted to bring this to your attention.
So we don't have the funding available at this point?
We don't have an identified source at this point. And as you all know, our budget is awfully tight this year.
How far is it? Are they wanting to pay just from there to the cemetery?
I believe it would be all the way up to basically the entrance to the landfill, past the cemetery.
Because that's not Arizona, it's San Jose, it's just a cemetery.
It ends at the cemetery. Okay, so it would be up to the cemetery then, you're right.
The cemetery or cemetery?
Yeah.
That is Arizona, okay. Yeah, and I have the email right here. So it would be, so it's overly on Arizona from its intersection with north to its intersection with Arch.
Yeah, okay.
So that stretch there.
Those are all county rules up there.
Yeah.
That's what I, I don't think.
Yeah. Okay.
We didn't ask them to help us with city work.
Sorry, just for clarification, I apologize. The city's contribution should be approximately $65,000 if they want to get forward on this. It's a little better, yeah.
But we still don't have the money.
We don't have an identified source.
So I was just driving there the other day, went up to Mescalco's to drop off.
Carport.
And I was realizing how really bad it is. Is there any way that we could propose like a quarter share of it? Or not do a half and half, but something different?
Sure. I think the county would be open to anything that we would be willing to offer.
Is that, that's why, since it's their road, but we do use it for city vehicles and for garbage disposal, I think it makes sense to address it.
Sure.
So let's see what we have to propose.
It's just, it's just really bad. I've been on that road and it's holes city. But if we don't have the money, we don't know how.
If Council wanted to direct staff, we could certainly look for funding options through marijuana revenue and see how our quarter two is looking and come back to you with some ideas on that. I would say there is a benefit to the city to the extent that it is used to access certain amenities that we have out that way that are in the municipal limits. But again, we don't have a budgeted identified funding source for this at this time.
Right. I'm the opinion, I guess, let's, let's look at that and, you know, with our second quarter marijuana funding and see if there's anything available.
Okay.
And bring it forward, let's take a look at it and see.
Okay.
But I think the 65 is probably a little stretch horse because it's county roads. I wouldn't mind doing a little bit. I'm not sure what you guys think. I know you guys were saying no, and that portion, no, the portion is not.
If we don't have it, I mean, that's what really makes me glad. Are they, are they sure they're going to get the grant?
No. I mean, it's an EIAF grant, so we are an entitled community for that. And we do qualify for the maximum amount of funding, which is true of the city and the county. They would have to go through a competitive application process, present their application to DOLA at a hearing, and there's, there's never any guarantees that you're going to get grant funding. But for the purposes of their application, they're asking us if we would be willing to commit to a certain amount so they can include that as part of their application process.
So when is that application due?
The application is due soon. It's due August 1st, but we would have opportunities between now and then, should the Council wish to, or something, but.
Do you have any objections to looking into that at this point? Or, I mean, if it's just a portion of it?
No.
What would you, what would you guys feel would be reasonable, 25, 30, 30,000? 20,000?
At 65, you said, a half?
That's the request, it's approximately 65.
We go half, that might be 32, 50. That might be easier than marijuana was because we won't have a lot anyway.
Well, just a reminder, the last quarter marijuana.
That's what I'm saying, it went down.
We had to deny some city services.
We have to just look at, you know, kind of see how it goes. Why don't you have staff look into it?
We can. We, I believe Cheryl's working on the quarter two marijuana request as we speak so we can see revenues versus what's being requested and see if there's any wiggle room to provide for some funding on this. And then if we can bring that next week to you at the work session for a suggestion.
Sounds good.
Okay? Thank you, guys.
Okay, item four petitions or communications were written. And like we've been doing in the last, I want to read the rules for everybody who, from citizens who want to come forward to speak. Item one, I'm sure all the phone devices and all these cell phones are either turned off, are set to silent mode, including me. Item two, out of respect for all attendings, we request removal of hats and overhead covering during the meeting unless required for religious or medical reasons. Item three, participants wishing to address the Council require to state their full legal name for the official record. Item four, please note the City Council will not respond immediately to comments, raise up petitions and communications. However, Council or staff members will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. Item five, we ask the speaker to maintain respectful and courteous demeanor, refraining from personal attacks and misuse of foul or abusive language. A civil discourse is appreciated and expected at all times. Item six, we request all audience members to respect those rights by not causing noise or disturbance that could potentially disrupt the proceedings of the meeting. And item seven, our request that the Council exclude the executive session, oh, that's an old one, so that's exclude that. So those are the rules and regulations that, and just an additional item about item five, about respectful and courteous demeanor. If something gets a little carried away, I do have the right to gavel you down. And if it continues, I do also have the right to have you removed. So those are the rules and regulations. Have one person speaking, Seraphim Chad Craft.
Mayor, Councilman. When do you plan on fucking off?
When?
When do you plan on fucking off?
Mention about the foul language.
Excuse me, did I say something?
You said foul, you said effing?
Okay, I'm just reading back the comments on the City of Trinidad's Facebook feed about me?
Regardless.
Okay, so I can't read, I mean, I find it funny that I can't, that I have to read these comments about me on your Facebook page, but I can't bring them up to you.
I would recommend you leave the foul language out, if you would.
Well, I would recommend you take the comments apart from the Facebook feed. I'll continue. I'll try to, should I use air quotes or something? I don't know. Because, you know, I don't like to use foul language. I'm against that.
I appreciate it.
It's not my style. This is, you know, but it is apparently the City of Trinidad and the, you know, the officer, Mr. Rutter's style to use these. So I'll continue. Lauren Lee says, Corey, oh, by the way, Corey Hallid said that she's the terrorist who sprayed little kids and elderly people on the Fourth of July. You know, she said this about me. She's using your platform. I did bring this up last two weeks ago, but nothing has been said about or done about it at all. So I'll continue. Lauren Lee says, Corey, you need to, you need to hex this incel cis het mouth breather for you? I don't know, is that too bad to say? I don't know. Incel cis het is okay? Do you know what that means?
For the border, we don't respond.
Other than for myself.
Incel cis het, I suppose mouth breather? You know, mouth breather, I had to look it up. It's a person with Down syndrome who has to breathe through their mouth, you know? I think that's inappropriate for a city of Trinidad to be, you know, using that language. I'm just the, you know, don't shoot messenger here. So I'd ask for these comments to be taken down. Along with the dotting of my name and address, which I was here two weeks ago? Nothing, I've heard nothing. So apparently, when someone comes up here with a, you know, a problem, the City of Trinidad thinks it's okay to put someone's name and address for the purpose of harassment on their Facebook feed. It wouldn't be so easy to take it down. I have the, you know, term, the, what's it called, I don't know, the City of Trinidad term review policy for the public, all of them have it broken, all of them, most of them anyways. So, you know, it says you can take down anything you deem inappropriate, but you have to take nothing, you know, nothing at all, which is why I'm back here. And I'll be back again. And again, if you want to keep having this conversation, I don't, I don't want to be here. I think it's disgusting, really. But if you want to keep doing this, Mr. Rutter, I have time. I do, I have a lot of time. So anyway, so remember, have a Joe Cosmopolis, Cosmopolis, he's saying, he's on a board, by the way, he's on the largest tax advisory board. I suspect he read this here, because I did take this first here. Yeah. He said, what do we do with our pitchforks now? Pitchforks? Really? I mean, I'm sure he's not talking about real pitchforks, but proverbial pitchforks. Maybe pitchforks like dotting me. You know? And you know who replied? The City of Trinidad replied, whoever that is. I've been told, I've been told it's a person named Anissa Rock. She replied, store it until you need it again. Ha, ha, ha. Do you think that's appropriate? Is any of this appropriate? You tried out some Democrat Party operative last week, and she conflated the Catholic Mass to Satanic communion. You know, I think that's just very inappropriate, I mean, really. Like, I even asked AI, you know what AI said? Says, I'm sorry, but I cannot fulfill their request. It's inappropriate and disrespectful to prepare a religious ceremony like the Catholic Mass to access violence and cannibalism. The demonic soulless AI has more soul.
That's your, that's your choice.
Mr. Rutter busted out laughing.
Thank you very much.
I thought that was totally inappropriate. You should apologize to every religious person.
Going on to item five, our consent agenda approval. Item five, approval of regular meeting minutes of July 5, 2023. Item B, approval of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee on the 2023, 2023 Master Plan. Item C, approval of the bills, one minute, what amount of, one minute, $711,307.05. Item D, approval of the payroll, July 8, 2023 through July 21, 2023, an amount of $495,135.07. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
And move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Paul, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ovaltree.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Item eight, transfer of ownership of a fermented malt beverage and wine license application filed CFL by CF Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta 6336 at 731 East Main Street, formerly JR's Fuel St., a stock incorporated, doing business at, as JR's Fuel Stock 810. Hearing is lawful. We have representatives from Alta. Would you please swear a man?
May I swear? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is a true testimony?
Yes.
Mr. Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor, members. Will you please identify yourself in the records, sir?
My name is Dennis Dircksey, last name is spelled D-I-R-K-S-E. I live at 1239 West Lone Cowboy Drive in Pueblo West, Colorado, 81007, and I'm the Vice President of Retail Operations for Alta DBA.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dircksey. And so you are here to, well, in support of your two applications for transfers of ownership of existing liquor licenses? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And Mr. Dircksey, have you reviewed the packets of information that have been submitted to the City of Trinidad?
No, that would be under compliance.
Okay, I understand. But as far as you know, those packets are complete and accurate, so. Okay, and it is the desire of your company, Alta, or I should say CF Altitude LLC, DBA Alta, to take over these fermented malt beverage and wine licenses from the Duran Oil Company, if approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor and members of Council, because these are transfer of ownership applications, and the only real questions are the ages of the applicants and also the moral character. I would submit that the submittals are complete and accurate, and they meet all the legal criteria. Were you going to say something, sir?
Yeah, I had a prepared statement and hopefully would answer some questions that you might have of who we are and how we run our business. I know we, I've been in front of the Council before, we have a store here already, but I just, I would like to be able to just kind of run through it real quick, just take a few minutes and just give you a little background. I do have Renee Madrid, she's our area sales manager for Trinidad, Colorado. She's been in the retail business for 20 years. She's here with us, I believe you all know her. She came over from Duran, so she's, she's going to be a great asset for us. A little background, I've been in the business for, convenience store business for 37 years, and been in a position to sell alcohol for several of them. We currently operate 161 stores and have over 1,300 employees. We currently have 136 licenses now, alcohol licenses, in seven states and 75 in the state of Colorado. We are familiar with Colorado liquor codes, legal drinking age 21 years old, hours we are able to sell from 8:00 a.m. to midnight, types of acceptable identification which must not be expired, state issued driver's license, state issued ID card, military identification card, passport, alien registration card, and as of October 30th, 2018, the digital ID. A little bit about our outlet operation. Most store locations are open from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. seven days a week. 24-hour locations that we have do have locks for rear doors, so we can lock them during our close of hours that we're unable to sell. Our stores here, they currently have between six at one and 12 at number employees. The beer will be located in view of our cashier at the register. Our register system is a passport system, and it allows us to scan IDs on the registers. So we scan all IDs. For employee training, I'm not sure what we have in Trinidad, if it's available with the TIPS program, which is a state program. I'm not sure if you guys have classes available here or not. But we do do our own program now, and it's called RTO. It's retail training online. And it's specific to the convenience store business. And there's a section in there for techniques of alcohol management for everybody to learn about how to sell alcohol. So we are a member of the bars program, and I'll explain that a little bit. It's a company that we've hired out. They send people to every one of our stores to do a tobacco and alcohol check. These are people that are of age, they're between the ages of 21 and 26. So they come into our stores, they try to purchase alcohol or tobacco. If the person IDs them, they get a green card. If they don't ID them, they get a red card. And we like to reward our employees. So if they get a green card for doing what they should be doing, that's a monetary value for them to spend in the stores. The red card, if they get a red card, that's when we, that's when we send them back through training, and we reconfirm our policies. And then if it happens again, then we decide if we're going to keep the employee or not. And again, that's for people between the ages of 21 and 26 that are coming into the stores to attempt. Just a couple of final comments. Our policy is to ID everybody for tobacco and alcohol purchases in our stores. So that's every store everywhere, that's our policy. And the final comment I'll make is any employee that we have that sells to a minor and doesn't do what they're supposed to be doing, IDing everybody, is terminated immediately. And that's from top to bottom. So if it was me, if it was Renee, if it was our cashers in our stores, I've had, I've had a store manager where I had to let him go, that's what it's 21 years because they didn't give them a job. But at the end of the day, that's how important we think it is. And I'll take any questions that you might.
Any questions, Mike?
Thank you.
Welcome to Trinidad.
Thank you.
I, I just wondered, there were a couple things that the fire and building had pointed out that needed to be done. Have those things been taken?
I can check into it. I don't know for sure, but all that stuff we would get up to code. Anything from health inspections to the, our inspections is between, it's kind of in the asset purchase group that we would both handle those together.
Thank you.
Are there fines to your employees that outside of getting fired?
Well, if there's a sting operation, some of these cells are subject to a fine in court, but we, we can't. If somebody gets like a red card, like, you know, it's not against law, so between 21 and 26, but they're not doing what they're supposed to do, we can't, we can't fine them or do anything like that because then we violate federal law by dropping their payable amount of wage. And that's, that becomes a big deal. You can't do that. You can't say, hey, if you had to drive off, you have to pay for that. Or if you have a cash shortage, you have to pay for that because you set yourself up for a real big problem if you do stuff like that.
You know, are your employees trained, you know, in the event that, you know, if someone comes in that's completely inebriated, to not sell to them?
Yes, yes. That's part of the techniques of alcohol management training and part of the state program. It's really heavily here in this whole business.
That's good to know. I'm sure that does happen.
Underage cells, there's, there's all different topics that they get in these things.
Anyway, I mean, thank you for investing in Trinidad and good luck.
Sir, in the event that someone, okay, shoplifts, you have surveillance cameras, what's the policy about someone that's a clerk going out and questioning a person? Is that left up to management?
No, we, we don't allow our employees, if there's, if there's somebody who steals from us and grabs something, runs out the door and call the police immediately. We don't allow our employees to run after anybody. It just sets them up to be in a bad situation and going anywhere. Our employees are safety first for us.
There's something I want to say, it's good to hear that you've retained, I guess, all of the employees from the previous owner.
Yeah, there's some great people working every day. She's, she's going to be a shining star for herself.
I'm sick of that.
Any other questions? Here, here. Any other questions? Okay. Anyone in, in house or listening in today wants to speak for or against the transfer of ownership? Hear none. Hearings not closed. Do you have a motion for the transfer of ownership of a fermented malt beverage and wine license application filed CF Altitude, CF Altitude LLC, doing business at CF Altitude, Alta 6336 at 731 East Main Street, formerly JR's Fuel Stop Incorporated, doing business as JR's Fuel Stop 810?
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Enter the discussion. Call, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ovaltree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item six B, a transfer of ownership of a fermented malt beverage and wine license application filed by CF Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta 6333 at 9960 San Vito Trail, formerly Duran Oil Company Incorporated, doing business as Trinidad Fuel Stop. Hearing is now open. Do we need to go through the whole process?
No, I'd ask you to accept all the testimony evidence.
Is there anyone in house or listening in wants to speak for or against the transfer of ownership? Any questions from Council? Hear none. Hearings not closed. Do you have a motion for a transfer of ownership of a fermented malt beverage and wine license application filed by CF Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta 6333 at 9960 San Vito Trail, formerly Duran Oil Incorporated, doing business as Trinidad Fuel Stop? Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, enter the discussion. Call, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ovaltree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item seven unfinished business, we don't have any. Item eight, 8A, 8A Resolution of City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado. Do you determine that an election is required to consider two valid issues of opposite selection should be held as a coordinated election? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, I don't know, Andre is not here. Do you have any information?
Yeah, I can certainly comment on this. So this is a resolution that's required under Colorado law to enable us to coordinate for the general election in November. So all it is, is saying that we're willing to participate with the county as a coordinated election with other entities who will also be on the ballot. So this is required for us to have our election in November. The alternatives would be us, for us to run our own election. And certainly, we don't have tabulators or any equipment that we would be able to do that on our own. So it definitely is in the city's best interest to adopt this resolution and coordinate with the county.
Any questions from Council?
How much does it cost to?
That I don't know, but we will get that information and get that to you.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a small amount, usually under 20,000, but we'll get you exactly the number.
Just curious.
Andre usually puts in the budget. I guess she knows it's upcoming anyhow, so it's in our budget. Any questions?
No questions.
Any question?
No, no question.
I don't have any questions either. Call, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Criego.
Yes.
Ovaltree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item eight B, consideration of pending change orders for Fox West Theater Project in the line of $232,124. That funding will come through DOLA, funding in CCI, and evidently some others. Do you have a motion? Second?
Second.
Mr. Rutter?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, just a few comments on this. First of all, there was a page that got inadvertently put into the packet, I believe it was page eight, and it spoke to the, which building was it?
It was the Champions.
The Champions Building. So that, that was an error. But. So instead of just having an architect come give us design plans that we bid out, we just connected the two. So it's essentially more of a design build than it is a traditional bid construction project. So that's why we're coming to you now with these change orders, but I do want to assure the council, the money for all of these change orders is there. These are all contemplated costs. We've worked extensively with urban neighborhoods and the architect on all of these things. Several of these change orders were last minute issues that came up, that we really just needed to move on. An example of that is some miscommunication with the contractor who did the encapsulation for the fire curtain that is made out of asbestos, and we had to fund some additional money for them to come and do that job properly. So we're, we're just asking for your blessing for audit purposes, for closing out the books on these projects and making sure that we're all kosher and keeping in line with the requirements of the project. And I'll certainly answer any questions if you have, please.
Questions from council?
What happens if, if and when we get a change order and the funds aren't there?
Absolutely. So we would never authorize work or never work through work for a change order where the funding isn't available. So we have actually two weekly meetings with the contractor and the architect to discuss these things. So we're keeping our eyes on everything, and as a former procurement officer myself, you know, I cringe at these things. So I totally appreciate the awkwardness of this, but I do want to assure the council that we are keeping our eyes on this, and we would never do anything that would sabotage or cost additional money.
So does the architect and contractor know how much we have available? So they don't over, ever over them?
They do. So the way it works is we, with, the city with urban neighborhoods keeps track of the budget. We don't necessarily disclose all of our budget to the contractor and the architect because we don't want to have them get wide eyes, you know. So, but if they ask us for a change, we'll verify that the funding is available before we authorize them to move forward on that.
Thank you.
Are they, are they working on more grants for that because of the work that they're doing? I mean, it's kind of seems like a continuous job, so do we have to look up anything for us on our part?
That's an excellent question, Councilmember Shu. So most of the funding for the Fox so far to complete the phases that we've done, and I believe it amounts to about $6 million, so it's not a small amount, has all been grant funding. We do get some in private donations. There's a campaign to sell seats, that you can have a named seat at the theater, there's some private donors on a more minor level. We've received a couple of grants in recent times where the work hasn't started. One of them, you all approved for the north infrastructure enclosure, which we're doing design work on, we'll get that project going pretty soon. And then just a few weeks ago, we got approved for a CCI grant for exterior stabilization of the Fox as well, to make sure the integrity of the shelf is good to go. So they trickle in, but I do want to, and I'm glad you asked this question, Friday the 28th, we have a group of us getting together, the big players, so urban neighborhoods, the city, architect, contractor, other community partners, to have a fundraising discussion. So I will send information to the council on that in case you all want to participate, but it's kind of an opportunity for us really to put our brain power together and think, how can we identify resources? I do want to mention though, as far as grant funding goes, most of the grants that the Fox Theater would apply for are also ones that the city would apply for, for our projects. So we do want to strike a good balance of making sure we're getting our entities' needs met with, you know, the Fox Theater rehabilitation, but as our budget numbers go down and our marijuana numbers go down, those grants are more appropriate for us to use for city projects than the theater, and so we're being very mindful of that.
Thank you for that, because that's, that's important. I think somebody should keep a watchful eye.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one kind of detailed question on the change order list. It says that the CTL soils report, it says approved, but we're approving it now, is that just a typo?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. So this is a summary sheet that came from Urban Neighborhoods and CSNN, CSNA architects. They weren't sure if that change order had been approved, and in fact, change orders one and two have also been signed and authorized. But what we wanted to do is just bring the whole lot of one through 15 to council so that we were transparent with you all and got your approval on everything.
And I was wondering, like your question, I was wondering if that was just a report? Was, was any monetary value on that or not necessarily because it was just a report?
On the soils report? No, that was something that was K word.
Okay.
Yeah, that's on.
Well, I said, I'm glad you answered it before you brought it up, but today's dollar amount, they're about a third, close to a third of the way through for funding.
Yeah.
Because they estimated that project to be around 19 million dollars, so it's close to being a third of the way through, so they got a ways to go. But they're, you know, even with that, with the amount of time that they've been added, they've done very well.
Excellent.
So it's, it's, and they're moving along pretty quickly. Any other questions? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. I am 8C, consideration of professional services agreement, advanced climate solutions, LLC for HBAC maintenance and on-call repair for municipal buildings, an amount of 73,125 dollars. All are due a motion?
Second?
Second? Discussion, Mr. Rupert?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have to present on this one as well. So this was a recent bid that we had issued to do general HVAC maintenance of all city facilities, including senior center, golf course, animal shelter. So anything that's misfully owned, we've recognized, and you all have been involved in some of those discussions, that there's a benefit to having someone on call to maintain our systems, to be changing filters, to make sure that we're not running into issues as we transition between seasons. So that's what this contract does for us. We feel like it's a pretty good value for the services we'll get on an annual basis for all of our facilities, and we're bringing it forward for you all to consider tonight.
Questions from council?
I have a question. So it says on fees, all service calls will have a fee of $200 for the first hour, and it goes on each additional hour, and rates for various people that are going to work. So if we're signing this contract for a set amount, if we have a lot of issues with HVAC systems, will that increase this?
That's a really good question. So that's, that's for billing purposes, so that's how they will invoice us. If it gets to the point where in a given year we're exceeding the not to exceed amount of that $78,000 and change, we would have to issue a change order or take some action on the contract before we could authorize additional work.
Is there any other funds available to be able to do, say, a catastrophic maintenance problem?
Well, for anything that's catastrophic to the city, that's why we keep a healthy reserve. So there's always a backup funding for emergencies, and we're required to do that by statute. So we do have money for emergency purposes, for just general wear and tear and things that we didn't expect. We could look at marijuana revenues offset in a needed purpose or salary savings, budget savings, otherwise. So we would certainly be eyeing that, and if it gets to the point where we're approaching that not to exceed number, we'll, we'll certainly take action well in advance.
Does that wear and tear clause apply to city council?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You have any, did we have anybody else bid on this?
I don't believe we had any other bidders.
It's just one?
Yeah.
What about the library? Is that job completed?
Oh, I apologize. Yes, that job, to my understanding, I think they're doing a few additional tweaks, but I've been in the library recently, the HVAC is working really well there, and they're either done with it or near completion on that.
The questions I was going to ask have already been answered.
A great idea on HVAC and air conditioning is serious business, especially at these couple of months. Yeah. Yeah, the library.
Well, I appreciate that, Councilmember Thurman. I would say we would anticipate in the long run, this will save us money as opposed to one-off calls when something goes down, and happy to come up with money on the fly to find a fix.
Yeah, anything else?
Did we, did we ever tackle that situation at the?
No, sorry?
Yeah. Yes. Okay.
I think that, that job is like 60,000?
Yeah, I believe that's complete.
My question was the same as what Karen was, and you know, I did some calculations as to the number of hours of all the different buildings, and it was over 500 hours.
Yeah.
And I looked at it and I said, it.
It's 10,000.
I mean, it's, it was 104,000. So if it exceeded that, so I'm glad there's a cap.
Absolutely.
And I'm glad that you guys have that in there because if, if it goes beyond that, I think, and of course, I think it gets catastrophic, a lot of times it could end up being insurance as well, so.
That's true. And they did really good work for us and so these other men, and so just to.
And it is important to do regular maintenance on equipment because you can, you know, you can alleviate any real problems that obviously pop up, and then you really got to pay, so. And it does say that a lot of their money that they're in there, that they have at 75, they're going to replace a lot of the filters and other things, so that was good, because that's all part of, that wasn't on top of the 75, so. Any other questions? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yeah.
Rico?
Yes. Reports?
There's a VA healthcare workshop event that's going to take place next Wednesday, July 26th, at the Mon Calma Wellness Center, and it focuses on expansion of VA benefits for healthcare for Vietnam Gulf, Iraq, Afghanistan veterans that are suffering from exposures to toxic chemicals. And Ray Odom, the Los Angeles County Veteran Service Officer is the one that's conducting this, and that's next Wednesday.
Urban Forestry is going to try and tackle the dog market, and those boadha weeds are just.
You might, she's done a good job with boadha.
Have you? I just want to volunteer.
Either go ahead, quit it, then expire.
Anything else, Karen?
No, we, we might need to think about putting some pebble, gravel, real small gravel in there to try and stop the weed from growing, but we have to clean it first.
You know, would it be a good idea on something like that to maybe, hate to do it, but maybe close it down for maybe a couple of weeks at the beginning of maybe September, or to spray the weeds and get rid of some of that stuff? That might be an consideration.
You could ask Mr. Rupert then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or even maybe in the, early in the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, Karen?
No, sir. Thank you. The mayor and a few of us have been going to the homelessness solutions coalition meetings that the police department and the city are, are doing a good job organizing and leading, and I think we're making some really good progress on those issues, and it's very good to see all of the interested parties who are at the table and have good ideas. And then I went to the Trinidad Art Fest this past weekend, and it was really well done, and that location was perfect for it, so, so I applaud the people who are behind that and did a great job coming.
We had Jen Green here last week for Parks and Rec during the work session, and tomorrow we have another meeting, and I'm sure we're just hash out what was talked about as far as.
Master plan?
The master plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as the master plan is concerned, and tighten that up, and probably don't leave down with that this week.
Well, like, you know, any plan like that, master plan, it's, I always call those, you know, live documents, can be changed at many times, but it's good that they, they did a good job on that, so.
Oh, yeah.
They did a super job. I attended a tourism board meeting, not going to talk much about that. Could you give us a little information on how the, are we getting information back from the SCADA that we were expecting? Is that working out pretty well?
From the wastewater treatment plant?
No, not, no, that wasn't the wastewater, that was the water.
Water. I don't know, Mayor, apologize for that, but we can definitely get some information out today.
Be nice on forgetting back the information that we were expecting.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing I was going to mention is that the, at the Space Creek project, those lights seem to be a problem, and before our warranty runs out with the contractor, because what they do is they go out in the middle of a meeting, they, they'll go out here, then they'll go on, then they'll go off. So I, I think I need to get the contractor or whoever the electrical contractor is to make sure that they stay on. I know that they took care of the heating because the heating was still on last month.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I was sure.
But the lights are, are no problem. And like I said, you know, I attended the homeless meeting, and one thing that was interesting is that that lady from Denver, I forget her name, she had a different name?
Kippy?
Kippy, and she was a, kind of an expert in homeless, and she concentrates on rural areas, so that's kind of her, her concentration, and she gave some really, really good ideas as to what can be done and what needs to be done, so it was interesting to listen to her. Did we get our, that, our T-Rex piece of equipment to get, get that taken care of finally?
I don't know. You're asking all the tough questions today. We'll also find out on that.
You know, I think Crystal Driving, I think you were listening in tonight, correct?
I asked her. Is Crystal on there?
Say Crystal, was it?
City Hall.
Oh, I thought it was City Hall. Anyway, she called me and it's next Tuesday morning, they're having an event with CPW at the Miners Memorial down here, and it's, I think we received some information on all that, and it's with, how to compensate for ADA issues, people on wheelchairs, and there's going to be someone there talking about what it's like to be able to maneuver around a community or whatever, and possibly even at parks. So she's asked, or she mentioned that anybody wants to attend, it's 10 o'clock Tuesday morning over here. That's all I have. Mr. Rupert?
Just a couple of things tonight. So Mr. Lewis Simpleton called us today to invite the council to the grant recipient ceremony at Phil Long tomorrow at 5:30 PM. So we'll send out some additional information on that to you all, but I just wanted to let you know you all are invited to that. On the 28th, OEDIT, and hopefully members of the Colorado Tourism Office will be visiting Trinidad to do a tour, and council's invited to that as well, and so we're finalizing the agenda. I'll send that out to you all, so if any of you want to attend. But it's a really great opportunity to showcase all the hard work and the partnerships we've done with OEDIT in our community, and they'll be looking at things like the Fox Theater, Space Creek, East Street School, the Holy Trinity site, and really just very interested in Trinidad and coming and seeing all the wonderful things that are happening here. So we're excited to host that and have them as well. And then the last thing I have is for less more than the council, the pond over at Central Park is atrocious.
Yeah, I gotta deal with that over there.
And we recognize that. So I wanted to just give an update to the council and the community as to what's going on over there. So what happened was the main fountain, the beautiful colorful one with lights, decided to take a dive, so it failed. But the good news is it's under warranty, so we did send it off to the manufacturer to have it refurbished, but of course, not having water aerated there has caused the pond scum to come back and hasn't been good for the fish. So I've, Bob has reached out to a contractor, and what I want to do is get a professional to come down and really help us with maintenance of the pond ongoing. It's, it's just becoming too much of a, a problem for us apparently to maintain, and I think we can find some resources to make sure that we have a pristine pond. The other thing that we're doing is making sure that we have two fountains at all times, so that way if one goes down, we'll have another one that's aerating. I believe I had two fountains in the past to begin with, and so we need to get back to that level. It really should be something that we're prideful of here, and so I, I want to certainly apologize to the community for the inconvenience, and we want to make that a great amenity for our community.
Yeah, I have a lady that walks that.
The other thing that we're doing is making sure that we have two fountains at all times, so that way if one goes down, we'll have another one that's aerating. I believe I had two fountains in the past to begin with, and so we need to get back to that level. It really should be something that we're prideful of here, and so I, I want to certainly apologize to the community for the inconvenience, and we want to make that a great amenity for our community.
Yeah, I have a lady that walks that, I guess, pretty regularly during the week, and she hit me up. The last time it was bad, and then she hit me up again.
Yeah.
Good. Anyway, thank you.
Sure.
Karen, I just wondered if we could get an update on what's going on with mosquito abatement?
Yes.
Yeah, certainly. So we tried spraying, apparently last year or the year before, and we gave residents the option of whether or not they wanted to be sprayed in their area. It's about a three hundred foot radius when you spray, so if one house on a block says, I don't want you to spray, then we can't spray that block. So it just became too cumbersome to try to work that out, and there are legitimate reasons why people might not want the spray in their area. Also, the cultivators, particularly the marijuana, have requested that we do not spray because it damages their crops. So insensitivity to those issues, we have chosen not to, to spray for mosquitoes. However, we have released robust information on our social media as to how individuals can control mosquitoes in their household and surrounding areas. We definitely recognize that this is a particularly bad year when it comes to mosquitoes. I've been itching for the last month, and I think that it's just something we have to bear with. Now, I did check to see if West Nile has made it to our region, and so far Colorado has no reported cases, at least of human contact, of West Nile. So we're monitoring that and making sure we're partnering and doing whatever we can to keep people safe.
I know that a couple of years ago, it was brought to our attention, there was another type of mosquito controlled, we never looked into it, but I don't know if even that would bother people or not, and would bother the cannabis industry if it, you know.
It was the non-toxic.
Right.
There's something about donuts, that there's this donut that you dip in water, do you do that in our lake or?
Yeah.
I know they've done that in spots, I know one spot in particular is right underneath the, the vodak over here, that's standing water there all the time. But yeah, if there's any finding water, a good idea for us to, to drop them, build it.
Certainly, and we have been doing some benchmarking. Fort Collins, for example, spends about three hundred thousand dollars a year on natural mosquito control, and they even have monitoring stations where the city itself tests mosquitoes for pathogens. We're certainly not to that level yet, but there's definitely things we can look into ongoing. Alamosa has a whole mosquito control authority, that's a full nonprofit quasi-governmental agency, so we, we definitely want to be sensitive to that, and I definitely recognize the inconvenience to residents, but definitely encourage the community to avoid standing water at their properties, and you know, there's certainly a peak hour in the evenings for mosquitoes. Wear bug spray, do what you can. The other thing that's been brought to my attention that's very effective is bats, apparently. So there's communities that put in bat cages to encourage bats to take up residence, and apparently a bat will eat up to five thousand mosquitoes in an evening, so. I know. Breakfast of champions.
Tell you one thing for sure, that if there does get, if we do get some kind of West Nile and it's identified in the area, the health department will do some testing, because they did that many, many years ago.
Yes.
They will go around to different areas and test spots.
Isn't it up to the health department to determine?
Yes, yeah, so there is a statewide effort to monitor for pathogens, and they do it in regional areas, and so certainly if there is anything discovered, there is testing going on in our community, and I imagine the health department would notify us of that.
No report, Mayor, council, but if I might inquire, are you still wanting to drain the pond in Central Park?
That is definitely a consideration. I have asked a question of the algae that's formed there, would draining it help that problem go away? Because obviously, we skimmed it, we cleaned it all up, and it came back. So if there's some kind of chemical or some kind of process we can do, I think we're all for that, and draining it is the right option. I understand we may have done that in the past, so it may be time to do that again.
We did that before.
What time of year did they do that?
They did it in the spring and emptied it out, then they put that rock, which, I think we need to talk about that too.
Sure.
That, the rocks, and all it does is release and it doesn't, you know, uncontrollable.
The pond or the pond?
No, around the sides, and then, and then during the winter, it's a big deal, everybody grabs one of those big rocks and throw it in there to see who can throw it to the ponds.
And the catties.
And I mean, it's ridiculous, but that's what they do, and then they killed the ducks there with some of those big rocks they were throwing out. So it was, you know, it's, we need to really, you know, it would be, I, I don't know how expensive, but, but wouldn't it be really nice to concrete all that rock in and just leave it cemented, that way we don't get weeds, and people can actually have access to fishing there? We might look into something like that because I think that would really help that place, and then that way, because I, I don't know how many guys have stopped me there with their little kids fishing, and they don't have a place to fish, and it's, you know, that whole west side of the, it's just full of catties.
And you and I would.
Yeah, we've been on there twice talking about it.
Most, you know, the issue that we have right now, when are they going to take care of that, how soon?
I know, I, I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. I know we've reached out to the contractor and we're trying to get them here ASAP to come do that assessment. I do know that our crews went out there to attempt to skim some of the pond scum off the other day, it got too hot for them, which, you know, we want to be sensitive to that.
I don't want to be a butt head, but.
No.
If you take that scum off.
Yeah.
Don't throw it on the side.
Okay.
I mean, it's like ridiculous, I mean, they leave there where you're walking and, you know, the birds, everything, I mean, it's terrible, especially by the boat dock, because they just took it off the thing and then just threw it on the side.
And I think the fountains won't work as long as you have the scum in there. It's sucking up the scum.
Yeah.
And it's clogging the fountains. I don't need to make anything, but anyway, thank you, Steve, for all the reference.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, I know it's hard to do, but anyway, I didn't need to take a seat in that rabbit hole or.
But I do want you to cast on about the parks.
I will.
Guys do a really good job, I mean, on the grass and the fields, they look outstanding. If we could get the park, and I did mention, did you look into putting a few more of those little canopies down there for barbecue?
Yeah.
Especially on that.
Yeah.
Backside there, because, you know, one big family comes and takes that, and then there's no place for anybody else, and, and I think lately there's quite a few people using those barbecues down there, I mean, it's surprising.
Yeah, Mr. Just is working on the, the upgrades to Central Park as we speak from a design standpoint, and before we move forward with that, I want him to come present to you all so you can give some feedback as to what we're, we're looking at, and you all for authorizing one or two five million dollars for upgrades, a lot of that will go to the grandstands, but there's certainly some other options and features we can get.
The other thing I was noticing last week when I was out in the ball, ball field, down the bottom, way down, you know, the way, there's, that concrete is really, really bad, there's some, I mean, there's some dangerous things, and I think it would be good if they can just take some cement.
Yeah.
And just overlay that at least now for the summer, because it's, it's, I mean, it's dangerous.
I'll tell you what, Mayor, we will bring this ASAP to a work session so we don't get into a discussion tonight, but, but well taken, and thank you all for, for your patience and time to work through these issues.
Okay. On to item eleven, executive session, eleven A for a conference with the city's attorney. For the first of these, receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS